Chief.
Present.
Councilman Montz.
Present.
President Skinner.
Present.
Sky pair two absent, square G and T.
Alright, we'll open on pages forty-seven through fifty-six. Fifty-seven, sixty-five, and one ninety-seven.
And two oh one for these.
And two oh one for the D's.
D's.
So let's start out with page forty-seven.
Basically, what do you guys in here, just so you know, on the neighbor's side is he has a vacant assistant police chief right now, and seven vacant probationary police officers. They will all, the vacant police officer will be filled in March and next year, and then February like the normal deal when they serve the academy. He served the academy, and then they'll graduate by fall, alright, so.
He graduated this year, November first.
November first, so they'll be filling these positions?
No.
These are vacant for next year?
These are even open now.
These are vacant positions?
People have left since we started the academy this year.
Alright, so these won't be filled until next, until next fall?
They're well, we'll hire them, you know, late March, but they will be on the street three years from November. We're almost nine.
But you can hire transfers?
We tried, but you know, somebody needs our victory, but. Somebody comes along, it's worth hiring, because obviously we have more guys on the street.
So Chief, how many, how many officers do we have on the force now, active, active duty?
Well, minus the seven, so we're at one thirty-three.
That's gotta be, does that hurt on your overtime, having these vacancies?
Yes and no, guys, this younger crew doesn't want to work overtime, so it's hard to people, to get people to work the overtime. So sometimes they go off short. But it affects everything, it affects morale, it affects, guys can't get days off, they can't take, you know, holidays, they can't take personal leave days because there's a contractual minimum. Which is, an afternoon is ten, other than Sunday, afternoon's ten, nights it's ten, it's nine, and Sunday nights, and on days it's eight, and then on Sunday it's seven, so.
Is the money, the vacant positions, um, is that being left over in your budget?
It's all gone. I'll look up the answer to that. I'll look up the answer to that.
You've done transfers, or there's still some left out there, I don't exactly know much, but.
Chief, what do you think, um, what do you think the main reasons that, that people are leaving, why things are difficult to fill?
Well, they're not difficult to fill, it's just that they, the state gives a test once a year, or when we call for it. Why do people leave? Most of them, you know, late in the last few years, just retired, you know. We had a guy retire yesterday, and he's going to work it from home, but left on great terms. One of our K nine guys, and Chief Ferguson retired, this guy's. Time ago.
Are these uncorseed retirements, or are they?
Um, most of them not, most of them not, but, you know, the mayor has been gracious enough, we know when the academy starts, say, the first, we know somebody's home in a month, April, will come to you guys and help, about the manpower, one forty-one, one forty-two, just so, for that one month, but. We determined an employee just recently, other than that, pretty much, you know, either, they either tell us, or there's rumors, okay, this guy's home, but there's a few guys that might, you know, rumors are going, first of the year, I think it's around twelve, now, because we usually run four, five, six, it just depends, but. Mayor had twenty-nine, he just retired, twenty, time ago.
In the, in the old days, uh, back in the, seventies and eighties, they would, they would, what's that?
I was here in the old days.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, just to, just to refresh for some of these people, that retirement, they didn't work thirty, thirty-five years. And I think the job might have been a lot easier then, but now, because of the, the stress that goes along with it, I don't think you'd see anybody last over twenty years.
It, it's getting more and more like that. When I went to J.C., when I was the chief down there for four years, or somebody had been around, they, every one of them left at twenty. There was, nobody stayed past twenty when I went down there, like, I've been out there a couple, two, three years, they all retired, they got twenty, they were gone. Um, you know, we're seeing a little more of that, um, you know, the days, guys staying for twenty-five, thirty, you know, it's a poor environment right now for cops. Um, you know, it's dangerous out there, um, and you know, even these younger kids, they think nothing of changing careers. I know a captain says, they'll think nothing, they, I went to one captain, he said, these young kids under thirty or half life careers, which I don't actually believe that, but that's what they said. And they think nothing going from one place to another, they're way out of line for us, going to another job. We haven't seen that in the last couple of years, but we had, you know, one guy couldn't go to the gas pipeline. You know, so, it just, people just move around, so you're right, it's more stressful, it's more dangerous. The environment out there is worse than, it's been my four years, you know, it's hard, so, yeah, that can be stressful.
Captain, I'm gonna answer that question another way, for you, being a young individual, if you wanted to be a police officer, okay, you could come on board here, you could work for twenty years, okay, right now, what's the, patrol would want, make about seventy thousand? Seventy-four thousand, okay? During that period of time, the city's gonna pay twenty-five percent of your salary towards retirement, you can retire at age forty-two, okay, forty-five, get thirty-seven thou, or thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, pay no New York State taxes, and get health insurance for the rest of your life at twenty-five percent of the city's cost. I mean, there's really not a whole lot, then you can go make another seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars someplace else.
But guys aren't making that kind of money, like, I don't know what years of license, just stuff, he's going to work for the time, he's licensed, undertaker, but other guys just, some of them leave and say, sorry, they're off, they don't take their manual job, you know, making thirty, forty thousand dollars a year, they're out.
Well, even if they're taking, getting a forty thousand dollar a year job, they'll still put some up to seventy-five, eighty thousand without the stress of being a cop.
True.
And the health insurance coverage.
And, and the health insurance, so there's, yeah, there's definitely some benefits for some of them, being, uh, law enforcement.
Chief, you mentioned that the younger guys don't want to work overtime, you know, you got a reason for that?
It's a culture, it's not just in law enforcement, I go, I think they say to, it's an, it's a cross the board, it's just, they, you know, they say, these guys, like, they don't even want to work for you, let alone overtime, it's just the way they are. You know, why, you know, why you're, you know, why do I have to do this, why, it's, it's the generation, I don't really get the answer to that. They tell us it's across the board, and that, it's just not.
On the record.
Somehow.
It's just, uh, it's just, uh, it is what it is, you know, it's just like, when they say it's just not law enforcement, and it's, it's across the board.
There are, there's some questions that I have, uh, police matrons, um, we, we've expended zero dollars this year.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the nature of the beast, we need them, and we can't hurt them, we tried, we tried up the salary, it ties up the resources, and we can't get them, and we have to have the money there in case somebody decides to take the job, and it's terrible, you know, you could call at three o'clock in the morning, we got a female prisoner, can you come in? You know, there's no notice salary, that, you know, if somebody gets arrested, and, or Saturday afternoon, and so, we used to have, years ago, a couple loyal older ladies coming down and dropping the dime, now it's very different, but we have to have the money there to try to fill the spots if we need somebody to work it.
So, what's the nature of them?
Guards female prisoners, till, till rain. You know, so, go back checking the cell block, and things like that, so it's, it's a lot of, um, every once in a while, you get someone to do what they work for, one or two, say.
You see, this looks at twelve bucks an hour, is that, is that what it is?
Is that what it is?
What does it?
It's tough to get everybody working, but we have to have the money there in case we do, because it ties up cops, and we gotta watch them. We try not to put them in the shelter, we put them outside the bar, which is a good thing, but, the other thing going out, we want to isolate them back on the sidewalk.
Is there any qualifications to be a matron?
Well, we do a better, you know, than that.
Chief, school guards, you have trouble getting those?
Sure, total trouble.
Yeah.
I think we have four, five in today's school crossings, that ties us up, unbelievable, but it's, it's something that, regulations, state law. We recently eliminated something, the state did a study that tells us we can do it, we can even do that on our own, like, one was in St. Sarah's, it probably crossed, but. This past year, we eliminated three or four, but the state had approved, they did a study to do it, and it's very, very difficult. You know, once it gets cold, it's nothing that, after day shift, it's not more of a school crossings for that hour, uh, in the morning, and then, in the afternoon. It's difficult to get them, very difficult.
Uh, the next page, holiday pay, uh, last year, we expended hundred and ninety thousand, this year, we're only at fifteen hundred, is that because we're, you know, just now getting into the holiday season, or is there?
It gets paid in December.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so every year, it's paid, they can, they have to tell us by November fifteenth, what days are cash, it's contractual, and then they get paid December fifteenth.
By December fifteenth.
Either before, either before, or December fifteenth, they'll process papers, so they'll, they'll get it signed, okay.
Chief, so I'm not familiar with the list of the equipment that was purchased last year, or this year, rather. Looks like there's a big bump there, what's the, what's the main commodity that's on that?
We have to replace the body armor every five years, and so, one of the streaks when we started years ago, when people retired, so this year, we have to replace fifty-three vests, almost nine hundred bucks, we actually, we ended up getting back half that from the feds. Plus, there's recruits, but we, we recruit that all, and recruits, the feds pay, and the state gives us back, and randomly recruits, so. The big bump is the fifty-three vests, we gotta buy this year, replace all of this.
Where do you send the old ones?
We have.
Give them to people you don't like?
That's off the record.
No, that's off the record, no.
You know, there's, there's sometimes, some departments will wear them, take out the life abilities, you know, I've seen online, you know, any department, I've given it a little exhaust and stuff like that. But, um, you know, there's the insurance company, new, the life abilities, five years, that's the best, if that's replaced, and if it fails, cities end up.
Is there a secondary market for them?
Not that we know of, you know, we give them, people do ride alarms, they'll give them, we have them for that, I've offered to fire them, because they talk to one type of medicine, they have stuff that, you know, they might sell. Or like, code enforcement, you know, take my deal too, I don't, anybody can wear them. You know, the only law says, if you can't wear them, commission of a crime, you know, whichever you want, or is that light, and it's shifted, before you shut up, do you see it? It wasn't a crime, it's a crime, we're investing in commission of a crime, or the fact, walk around, it's anything you can wear.
Ammunition supplies went up twenty thousand dollars, why are we buying more ammunition?
Oh, there's a lot of stuff, it's in that line, not just ammunition, probably most of it's the tasers rate, so, we entered, our tasers had to be replaced, and, um, we ended up to contract to them, so the vest they took up is, uh, there's no mild tasers that, before we had to buy the tasers, there's the practice rounds, the batteries, the live rounds for training on street, and who is, uh, replacing, and actually, we added a few tasers, and includes all the batteries, all the cartridges.
And online training for all.
And, and certification for the guys to train it, that's all part of the package.
And that's thirty-two thousand dollars?
Yes, so that, actually, you can take it out, come or not.
So that is, that, that thirty-two grand was not in the budget last year?
It was not.
The things, uh, chief, that are listed with the zero, um, cost, or zero, uh, fund, does that mean that they're, they're, you list them, but they're not funded this year, because you don't need them?
We don't need them, right, stuff we had to buy in the past, or we did.
But you keep them in the budget?
We keep them in the budget, but we don't need them soon, so whether, you know, we just zero them out, we show you them, well, we don't need some, we don't buy them, so. If we don't need it, we just zero out, we just, we don't, we don't, we come to us soon, for instance. When we start replacing some cars? We just bought four S U Vs, they ordered, and they, you know, bought the flag further, it was a new truck, so, they told us it's gonna be another three months, so we're getting, uh, we just got it, I just got it faxed last, last week, saying about three more months, so we bought new hybrids. They say, if you go by what they say, it's gonna save you, save some money on gas and stuff, but, so there's four S U Vs ordered, you know, probably.
Cause I know, the last time, you was wild, though.
Yeah, cars, you know, it was four.
Gotta be getting up there for your expenses, you gotta be getting up there in hours.
But that much, one or two were there, but, you know, I told, you guys been around for a while, every manufacturer says the mileage is actually three times what it says, because of the octane.
Because of the time.
Stuff that, if it says a hundred, you really got three hundred dollars, um, so, um, actually, our person, our person line this year is just, this is the first time, I just, just money into it today, we're in September, January, September, or October, it's just, uh, because if you don't, you pay me for this, or you pay me, just start putting money in.
Oh, Steve got forty-seven thousand in your cars? Forty-seven, was it?
Yeah, I upped it a little bit, because, you know, we got a.
Forty-seven five?
We gotta keep them out of the road. We gotta, I was just saying, now, we just keep them in the best shape we can, we just started to try this year, um, so, we try to keep them up, but we, we have enough to go out by now, we're, we're retaining.
Is the, is the petty cash used for info, information, I mean, you have a, you have a third line for?
Petty cash is like, anything under fifty dollars, like, we, we need tape, you know, a couple emails.
We have a line for that, because sometimes a petty money, whatever, that's a different.
Yeah, that's a different line.
You have a line for that?
Petty cash is, it's gotta be under fifty bucks, it's like, we need keys, like, to save your locker, or, or, stuff like that, or if there's some office supply that we can't get it available, or or we need gas, or generator, we need trained, in the winter, things like that.
Does that, on your, your?
Body money's under special law enforcement.
Okay, it's, it's not a separate line?
It is, it's sort of back on the west page, well, not, like, idealized.
So.
Page fifty-six.
Yeah, my pages are numbered differently.
Just curious how much you can get out of that line?
Twenty-two five.
So, we used to do twenty, twenty-five thousand, a couple dollars, it just depends, you know, we buy.
I, I remember reducing that, I was just saying, to have that money available to you, years ago.
We buy guns, we pay in funds, buy drugs, and it's not cold, you know, when we need it, when we don't, sometimes, you know, we have to, you know, take.
Gas heat for the West Street Fire Station's in here, top page fifty-three, last year, we only expended forty-nine hundred dollars in a six thousand dollar budget. Looks like this year, we're actually on track to spend less than that, uh, do you think that we need a six thousand dollars in that line?
It's hard to say, we, we got a huge bill that we flew in the past, Chuck tried, we tried to figure it out, Chuck tried to look it nice up, um, but, you know, the, the heat's gonna be out near soon, you know, we still have this and stuff over there.
Well, the, the, I'm, I'm assuming that the colder months are at the beginning of the year, I mean, I know it's gonna get cold again soon, but if we expended twenty-four hundred dollars, and say, correct me if I'm wrong, dear lord, but it's through July, so it's over half the year, you know, that, and it's probably unlikely that we're gonna be expending more than forty-five, forty-six hundred dollars in that line by the end of the year, and, uh, that's even less.
The thing is, we've got some crazy bills from them, and that's, that's why we're giving ourselves a push, and we got a bill.
Two thousand and sixteen, we spent eighty-three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some crazy bills, so actually, we're twenty-three, whatever, twenty-four hundred, then that was, we just don't get it, we've been nice over there, we recently replaced the oil over there.
So why the variability? We happen to spend eighty-three hundred dollars one year, and then forty-nine hundred?
We don't know, we've asked nice and, we don't know.
We've had to go check it out, have to, you know, although I will say, for the last year and a half, we've taken bills about better.
No, six thousand's better than eighty-three, but we don't want to come off short, depending, you know. As I said, we've been trying to straighten this out, we've made some nice things sometime.
It's got that special gear, where they're, they're, that's a, you got a one.
No, this is, we need to put it in the water, and, you know, it's, it's, that's what it is.
Equipment, what do you store over there, chief?
Evidence, equipment, I D works there, that's already counted for, a car that's gotta be saved, the whole car's gotta be dusted for prints and what. We had one of our guys retired, and all of them, they're, they're shot, and we still have some, so.
This is which station?
M D O, West Street Fire Station, did a swap, and, and, it was here, they took, with the train, seven minutes, and, because we had that, and we took the fire station. And, you know, so I D uses a lap, but we store stuff over there, like, not just junk, we store evidence and stuff.
Do you have an office there, please?
Uh, that, no, like, no, there's absolutely not, there's not enough room, it's, it's pretty full, uh, without this, you know, the places, the windows are wired, it's got a alarm system. Um, any cars that's gotta be impounded for, I would say, a sure, a serious shit, run accident, goes through the process, especially if, you know, whether it's cold or not. You know, it's mostly I D, um, actually, the only ones going out, uh, you know, control what's out of there, like, a serious accident's gotta be impounded car, they know how to get in there, but the car.
Last year, we spent twenty-one hundred dollars in the last four months of the year.
So, so that would, that would bring us to, to forty-five hundred. I mean, do we, do we foresee these, these issues coming up again? It seems like, it sounds like it's been solved, but only if you look at the past two years. I mean, if, if, if we, if we spent twenty-one hundred in the past four months of the year, in the last four months of the year last year. I mean, you, you can, you can make, and considering that, you know, this year, the bills have only brought us to twenty-four hundred through, uh, July. It seems like you could cut.
Would you be comfortable cutting a thousand dollars off it?
You can try.
It's not like you're gonna do without it.
I don't have a crystal ball, you know, nice second access, and there's no rhyme and reason, that's why I said I have a crystal ball.
If you do anything, because it wouldn't go over to five hundred dollars, only because, what we talked about before, that places and increase it twenty-five percent.
If you cut five hundred, why cut it?
I'm saying, that's my, you cut it from.
Six thousand down to five thousand, and one to forty-five, forty-six hundred. You guys can do what you want here, I just, trying to.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of cutting anything here, this one.
I am not either.
Okay.
Something, uh, it's just going to proceed, maybe, next week, we can get the snowlets out, what? Captain, it's coming, but this weekend, there's frost.
We gotta change something on page fifty-three, where it says cellphone monthly cost is eighteen thousand dollars, is that incorrect?
Yeah, I was gonna say, eighteen thousand bucks for a month of cell phones?
Eighteen thousand for a year.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's a yearly cost.
I will, uh, make a motion to amend page.
I get twelve, twelve at fifteen hundred, monthly cost, twelve at fifteen hundred.
Make a motion to amend page fifty-three, line cellular phones to cellular phone monthly cost, twelve at fifteen hundred dollars.
Can you?
I'll second that.
On in favor?
Alright, alright.
So what is this, anyway, because we, it looks like we only expended eighty-six hundred dollars in, uh, twenty eighteen, and now we're spending a lot more than that. Is it just cell phones for officers?
It's, uh, it's cell phones, yeah, well, plus some like that, service, service, that knows. Um, detectives all have cell phones. Traffic guys have one, um, I think, or else. I think we have a total of thirty-four phones, or something like that, the, the patrol, um, there's, there's two for patrol, they, they use them, hand for shift and shift, there's extra batteries, so. Captain, and the lieutenant, and days, and they come in, they put the batteries in, and then the shift takes out the same phone.
So is that we've added in tablets in the last, oh, year, is that what?
We've had tablets for years, tablets for years.
So I think, Councilman Livingston's asking why that cost doubled.
It really didn't, I'm just gonna.
What's that?
Well, that's, that's a bummer.
I don't know, but this is, if you look at here, this is what the officers pay.
We only cover, we're excellent at girls, um, the guys pay for the data, like, we cover the phone, the basic phone, and, uh, like, thirty-eight hours, they go out, they email everything out, and they pay for it, so, come January, the guys have phones, and they like the extra data, they be sure they write each other, two hundred, three hundred, something like that, for the, for the extra data, they pay for the taxi and stuff like that, they pay themselves.
Do they end up using that phone for personal use?
Sure, why wouldn't they pay for the data? They pay for it, we know our chart, we, we have it on there, there's no, there's no, we don't go over it, our plan is on there for them, so they pay for the extra data, for taxi, or email, work email out, and stuff like that.
Chuck, is the, is the expended number correct? Is that what you're looking at there right now?
Yes.
Okay.
What will you see as the expended numbers, less the reimbursements that they gave us?
Meaning that?
Okay. They gave him, say, seven thousand dollars, that's why we budgeted that extra, that new, or something more than that.
So you said there was around seven thousand dollars of reimbursements in twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
See, they paid for the year, but we haven't been going for the year yet, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, you got, I was getting the year.
Is that a revenue line that we have?
No, we put it against the expenses here, but we, probably technically should be a revenue line. This is where it's always been, I'm not agreeing, I'm disagreeing with what it is, but that's how it is being.
Is that a change we should make, or?
Wouldn't say it's a time, let me do some researching, and to see how, you know, we also have a chief like this.
Only chief one. I'm knowing what it makes people do, I don't, no, I don't know if anybody else.
One of the things, by taking it out of here, and putting it into revenue, you don't want true costs of cellphone bills, you have revenue here, this way you can earn the true cost.
Sure. The mules for prisoners line on page fifty-six, we already have three thousand.
That's the whole contract that we have?
We, some of it was in, it's not a contract, it's by, you know, it's with McDonald's, but we had it in a, in a blanket, so we have twelve hundred left. We actually just looked into it.
Go to McDonald's, maybe, clock in the grocery.
I know, so it's twelve hundred left for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Can we actually feed the prisoners?
Yeah.
To get McDonald's?
They're locked up all night, they get McDonald's, they gotta get lunch.
The prisoner meal is, I think, one burger and a goat, right?
Years ago, they were feeding them for the park matter, and then we had more people getting arrested, because they wanted to get.
Oh, so.
Years ago, for your old guys.
Oh, boy, you can wait for that. That's where you used to get it from, really?
And that, that's quite unusual punchline right there, they.
So, shit, huh? But a couple died along the way, too.
Bring it over at six o'clock in the morning, I'm not kidding, that was many years ago. But, Captain, ask your question, we have twelve hundred left, there's.
Okay, thank you, and then on the same page, the background check line, have we hired any?
Yeah, we do that once a year, and that question, well, if you're a concept owner, you're.
Thank you.
We use the week, yeah.
The Brum County Drug Task Force, is that no longer exist, or we just don't pay into it anymore?
No, it is, um, we're a big part of it, plus the sheriff, they see, has two guys, and he has one, um, what are you looking at, the copier?
No, bottom line.
It's the bottom line, page fifty-six.
We got grant one year, and we, this was the expense that we used to spend, that grant money.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, the D A gave us, uh, the commissioner, sorry, one year, gave us that, that money, and so, can it be from you guys except for, no, it was not.
So the line stays there until your zeros all the way across, we're spending in twenty eighteen, cross, we don't get rid of the line, until you have zero, you're just there, see?
Okay, thanks, ma'am.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the parking ticket writers, are you looking to, to fill that one vacancy?
All the time, we are, since the hours. All the time. We are, since start with the hours, it's eighty dollars weekends.
Good part-time job for retired councilman.
Yeah.
That'd be a great job.
Hey, the restaurant tours can do this right or get slower at the restaurant, but we tried, you know, we've had a couple of people take the jobs, work a week or two.
Actually, we're, we're like Starsky and Hutch. We're gonna ask you for a detective's position.
We can talk. But, uh, we try to hire, um, as we said, this year we've hired a couple of, worked a couple of reasons, get out of the zone. It's out there. We try to, like, do it. It wasn't everybody wants to do it. Actually, right now, the auxiliary police chief's one. You know, by word of mouth, you know, I'm not a good guy. So he's, he's the latest one. They had a few months to know anything. Yeah, we're trying to fill it.
It must have been a hard time job for a retired.
It'd be hard to read in the summertime. What do you hope?
A little harder than winter.
Yeah, a little harder.
Now, I'd be around winter. I don't care about winter. It's the summertime. I don't want that. It's the summertime. I don't want to be.
On the, uh, page two oh one, the, the fees, if I could jump ahead on that.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, um, we're looking to, to raise the, uh, parking meter fees a quarter per hour or per half hour parking. Um, and I'm wondering if, uh, if, cause I, I don't, I don't know the science of like.
Nope.
Well, let me, let me actually.
We're gonna let Jerry handle this. The chief's out of this one.
Oh, sure, yeah.
It just happens to be in my budget.
Do let me finish the question. I, I was prefacing it in a, you know, start stop way, but I guess I'm curious to know, um, if there's a way that we can achieve similar outcomes. And having a generation with the meter fines, uh, as opposed to raising the, uh, parking meter fees.
I'm gonna answer a little bit on that. And I think the actual fines that we're collecting are going down. I don't know if our tickets are being less. If people are utilizing the kiosk easier with a credit card than just putting coins in. I can tell you that our initial dollars that we collect is, for parking, it is less in the past two years.
The fines you're talking about, but re, the revenue is what, from the, from the?
So I, I think this is kind of a part of a holistic discussion and one that was identified by the parking study that was completed in two thousand and sixteen. Um, the rates on the street and, and we principally look at, uh, the reason why, uh, parking, uh, meters charge a fee is not for revenue generation for the city, but to ensure availability of spots when people come downtown. You can imagine a scenario if, if parking was unlimited and free in downtown and somebody wanted to come down to do business, it'd be very difficult. But we have those meters to basically create a, a market. And, uh, right now, the market at fifty cents an hour is causing many government employees to park at on-street, uh, spots and pay at the kiosk. We've made it very easy for everyone, uh, with our kiosks and with our mobile app. It also makes it easier for folks who view it as a real value to park right outside, uh, a government plaza or a store that they may work at or, uh, an office building that they may work at. So our sort of depressed parking, uh, fee per hour is causing a lack of availability in the downtown area. I'm sure that Rwanda City Council hears it from, uh, different people who go downtown, who own businesses downtown. And it, it's, it's out of whack with what the current demand is for parking. It was recommended in the parking study a couple of years ago, the dollar an hour. Um, and if you look at some of the other cities, um, we're, we're slightly behind. Not to say that I think we should be comparable to a Buffalo, but, um, definitely are behind the times as it relates to our on-street parking. We wanna drive availability and right now it's, it's so cheap that people are parking and staying for a longer period of time than maybe they need to on, on-street parking. So, um, that's what we're looking to do with the, the on-street parking. It's not a revenue generator, but, uh, to match what experts have said, this is what you should be charging in downtown.
Would it, would it, it's not a revenue generator, but would it, uh, keep people from parking at a meter if it goes up to a dollar an hour rather than fifty cents an hour?
Right now, the chief reason why people aren't parking at a meter is because they can't find a spot. Um, it's so cheap that we're seeing.
I can see that. Now, where the, you know, the tires are lined up like they are in large cities.
Yeah. And a given block, you wanna have one or two available spaces at any time. Um, and if, if you're not achieving that, it probably means that the price for parking is, is too cheap or it's not being managed or not easy for people to, to pay.
Do you have a, like a mandatory, like two-hour max parking?
We have that in Core Street right now. Um, the recommendation from the parking study was to not put time limits on parking and let the variable be the price and not the price and the amount of time that somebody's, um, staying. Um, I think that, that probably needs more study, but right now, Core Street between, uh, water and state is the only two-hour only zones. Everything else is, is essentially unlimited.
Is that enforceable? I mean, without chalking the tires or something, how do we even enforce something like that?
Somebody can't buy more than two hours, so they would have to return.
Because they have their license plate number in there. Right. Okay. And so they couldn't buy again from the same kiosk or they, like, what, how does that?
Well, if they have a, if they have a mobile app, there, there are probably workarounds, not any more than we had when we had the actual mechanical meters where people could just feed the meters all the time. But when you force someone to return, to buy more parking and go across the street or something like that, um, it, it, it deters them. I think with the license plates, we are able to limit somebody from buying at the same kiosk, the same license plate for an additional two hours.
And, and what's the, the delay there? So like, if you came back an hour later, would it, would it kick back in? I guess I'm curious.
Yeah, but it prevents you from buying, purchasing more than two hours with the same license plate, only in that, only in that zone, is correct.
Okay. And, and so the, the basic idea behind raising it is that then reg, people who are regularly downtown would find a more long-term solution to parking because they look at the numbers and they'd be like, I'm spending three bucks a day now instead of a buck fifty a day. And they do the math and they say, okay, I'll go find somewhere else to park.
We hope that they would, uh, park in our parking garages, maybe bike to work, maybe find a, a spot that's further out, they can walk to, if they can park for free. Um, that's our ultimate goal is to, the people who really need to be, really wanna be in front of the business that they're going to, they can pay that premium for folks who are maybe doing it as a convenience or the fact that it's so cheap that they just wanna do it. Uh, we wanna push them towards the outer areas of downtown or encourage them to ride share or, um, a carpool or, you know, ride a bike tour, that type of thing.
Can you make different kiosks different prices? For instance, the ones that are the most popular that you're talking about, make them a dollar an hour and keep other ones at fifty cents an hour that are further away from the downtown, maybe be less?
We can use variable rates, but what the parking study showed is that, that sort of secondary zone that they identified is largely free parking anyway right now. So we didn't wanna add in making that, uh, like fifty cents an hour and then have an even smaller circle in the core of downtown for a dollar. Uh, so where we have currently metered parking is where they already identified that should be a dollar an hour. But we have that ability with the kiosks. We've also added a lot of on-street free parking spaces in downtown area, on Lewis Street, uh, further up, on Holly Street, Carroll Street. So i- it's, it's one of those things where, you know, we wanna keep downtown visitors and businesses kind of at top of mind. And this is actually a way that we feel will, will open up availability for people who are coming downtown.
Are all those spots by the arena and the new, on the new street there, the new parking spots that they made on, um?
At State?
At State. Are they official, are they for official use only or can people park?
Official use only.
All those, that's true.
Uh, well, some, they will be eventually. Cause there's police on one side of the street, on State Street, and then official vehicle parking. I think there's some additional signing that has to happen, but.
Why not let people just, you know, go in and out of there, you know, for, I don't know, it just seems like official use parking, they're around during the day, but at nighttime, maybe should be open for people to park. Kind of defeats the purpose to make parking spots not, not having.
Chris, the other side of the street's lined up with those B P W trucks all night. That's your parking spot. There's, there's no spots there. And my people are around on this side of it. But if you go, like, like those pickup trucks now, if they drive, they're all there going.
So the, the spots closest to City Hall, that would be the sort of most convenient, that's for B P D for coming and going and, you know, twenty-four seven. And then further down, there were always official, uh, parking spots. Same thing on the other side of the street. But we're always looking for, for other ways to open up additional pay-to-park spots. Checkaboard approved some on Holly Street about a month ago near the incubator that we'll work to install. So open up additional parking where available. And I think everyone has seen a copy of the parking study and now we can, you know, we can send it along.
One of the biggest complaints you hear from people that come here from downtown for a meeting or people that come here to pay their water bill or sewer bill or parking tickets on second floors, I can't find a place to park. Or they have to park on Core Street.
Is that surface lot always full during the day?
Tom, that depends, okay? When there's anything going on in, uh, family court or courthouse, that thing's full for a whole number of days. Okay, the whole area on Holly Street, Isabel, this whole area is always full. And it's because there's so many people that either work in the state, county, or city that are parking there.
You need that parking?
We do.
President Scanlon, two hundred and twenty-seven, um, city clerk's office too, the experience at Evering School that, um, people come in. There's people that have called and said, well, we're gonna communicate a marriage license, but we can't find a place to park. So we're gonna go to town, being ten, uh, that, while we experience that a lot, we're losing forty dollars. Because people, it's just easier for them to go elsewhere for parking on.
In particular, in the Farming and Shade Funeral, Bitch for the other time, wherever I end up going there. Well, they can't come here and get their desk or tickets for thirty seconds running and out to get it. They can't find a parking spot. They dread it.
So you can, you can do a fifteen, twenty-minute parking spot outside of City Hall for people that wanna come in for whoever's license or.
We actually have that right now. We, I think we have four parking spots, uh, right across City Hall, a fifteen-minute parking. Right on Hol, well, Holly Street this way.
People need to know that though. Maybe that's, that's the intent. People don't realize we have.
We're starting to.
We have fifteen minute, or fifteen-minute parking. And there's a, uh, in front of Southern Holly Street, there's a one-hour parking zone for free. So this is kind of the, you know, this is the kind of the, the end of the, we did the parking study, we went to the kiosk model. And this is kind of the, the final phase of implementing and kind of updating parking for downtown Biggerton. And, uh, that's, uh, that's where we're at.
Anything else?
Well, uh, make a motion to approve pages forty-seven through fifty-seven, sixty-five, one ninety-seven, and the police fee on two oh one.
So, on the favor, we look, I would go as amended.
They didn't make it.
I thought we did make it.
Yeah, the one for the, uh.
Oh, we did. We, the, as amended.
On the favor?
Alright.
Pass this.
Thank you, look.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, you two, you, the chair is left of the room. Anybody else?
Okay, so please stay probably down for this. Shouldn't have opened it.
I'm, I'm engaged. I'll reopen it.
We're doing from the side.
I know.
There's a lot of options.
You're a sir.
Good thing I asked.
No, I don't really have a screen.
I know.
I don't usually do it. I'm gonna try.
Maybe some like spare.
Yeah, that'd be good though.
Yeah, I love caramel syrup.
Yeah, try some.
Am I, am I being rude?
Nope. Pick it up.
The Bible.
What the hell is messenger voice?
What is next on our list? Page forty-two and forty-three.
Oh, we can't open it yet.
Might be a way to open it.
Now, without the.
We do have form, but I'm not on.
I'm not, I'm not in financing.
I have, a lot of us are.
Geo Daniel. Can this committee meeting happen? There's not a quorum of the finance.
Yeah, we got more.
As long as you have four council members.
Somebody from the committee?
One person.
Well, technically now, all we can do is take action to get it back. That's all we can legally do.
He runs the meeting, so.
Yeah.
Was he on the phone though? It's, this is, that's a, that's phone call is official record. Child group.
Yeah, you're pressing right.
Can you fill those?
I'm just more at the bottom of the story.
Chairman, page forty-two.
We couldn't do anything without you, you know?
Sorry about that. Okay, pages forty-two, uh, through forty-three, one ninety-eight, thirty-two, and we have another page that's, uh, okay. Lori, take it away.
Okay, the changes in personnel services are all contractual.
Or we're software, where, where'd that go?
We usually, we usually budgeted in capital, everything we had, there was unused, um, money left that we had transferred in. So we leave that line there just in case, you know, something happens during the year, we'll transfer money in there. We wanna make sure, when your department wants to buy something, we actually have them transferred into my, uh, partner's software line. So the purchases go through my department and provide the same technical equipment.
Thank you, Lori. So this, this is sort of interesting, the parking kiosk fees. Where's the, the revenue associated with this? Uh, do we anticipate that doubling? And then, and then where is that? And then also, um, you know, with, with, with higher transactions, is that, does that increase the fee?
That's why these fees have been increased because we anticipate they work on.
So would, would, uh, okay.
So if you go to page. It's gonna be on page, uh, about three quarters of the way down, um, four one, seven four one.
Gotcha. Were you at seven hundred and fifty thousand?
We took the numbers up from four fifteen. Last year they were four forty-seven. We budgeted four fifteen and brought it up to seven fifty.
So that could, that could even be conservative.
Yes, it is conservative. They don't really know.
Line with the projections for that.
Exactly. So, I mean, it's a conservative number.
Okay, thank you.
And we are working on trying to figure out a better method for the credit cards because there's, there's doubt there's so many transactions that should low down the value. There are a few that wanna take, take the risk. So hopefully we get this fee submission for water, so we take care of the firm and take this onto the other.
The wireless fees, what, what are those?
That are, so we have to have L T E service for all the license plate readers for the handheld parking ticket reading devices. We have two cameras in parks. We have all the police devices, the mobile data terminals in all the police cars and mobile data terminals in the fire trucks and for the vet cars.
So we use the vet there?
For racing models, right. It's all state contract.
Okay.
But we, it's easier to consolidate it in one place. You can see it all in one place.
So I don't know if you've done, um, any more research on this. I'm sure that, uh, Councilman Livingston has, but. Because that's, we want to upgrade the, the AV infrastructure to allow for something like that.
It's coming this way.
Just fix the audio up there as well as having a server or whatever it needs to have that output.
And so that we can do it without having to pay someone overtime to sit there.
Absolutely, yeah. No, I mean, I, I think that's a great idea, but, you know, I don't think that cost should be prohibitive, I think that the way that Councilman Livingston has it set up is pretty cheap and it's sort of good enough. You know, it's better to do it that way than, like, just to have the city clerk press on and that be it. You know, it'd be better to do it that way than to not have something at all. So, sure, let's, you know, put research into that, as you're saying, Jared, I think that's probably the best, best idea going forward, but like, you know, if it comes up being too much money put into a budget one year, let's not have that be sort of the reason not to do it.
Okay.
I bet Geo's watching this video right now.
Wow.
You know, I...
I don't think so. I would say no.
Maybe not right now, but it, he may look back on them.
Dan, you have these on the website someplace?
There are all, all the videos, I, I upload them on to YouTube, if you just search Binghamton Public Meetings Archive on YouTube, you can find them. And, you know, once the meet, once they're recorded, just to give you a sense of the motions I go through, I just transfer them on to my computer and upload them. I shoot in my definition, so it takes a few hours to upload, but the computer works fine while it's uploading, because most of what you do on your computer, you're actually downloading data off of the internet, so you don't even notice that it's going on in the background, really. And it can take a few hours for the videos to upload, but once they're on there, I don't pay anything to YouTube to store, you have unlimited storage on YouTube.
But the sound is awful.
Well, sure, I mean, that's because I'm not good at this. I mean, I'm just an amateur, and I think that if, if the mic were coming, you know, down from the ceiling, you know, if it was, if the mic was, if there was like, even if there was just a plug that was there, and the mic got moved from, from room to room, I think that there are easy ways to capture better audio than I've been doing, but I'm just bringing in my, my setup on the fly, you know, it's what I managed to...
The acoustics, the acoustics in that room are...
Upstairs and downstairs, terrible, these are the two.
I can barely hear you guys when you're talking when we're in the council chambers. I have bad hearing in my right ear, so it's, it's very difficult. If we can do anything about that.
Yeah, well, I think that's what Jared's talking about, is getting a real audio engineer into the space to figure out, come up with a solution to that problem.
I had a question about, were you done with that? I had a page, question just about page thirty-two with the record storage, I guess I'm curious to know what, you know, what records, what's the...
All the records that we require to store for, so it's to be our state are stored.
And is there a reason why we don't store them at the, like, the county clerk's storage?
We have looked into that, but it was more costly than I believe than what we're doing now.
Oh, wow, okay.
The New York State retention law is extremely specific.
Complicated.
Very, I mean, we have to keep marriage records, we have marriage records from the eighteen hundreds, we have to keep their applications, their licenses, everything, forever. So, and we do four hundred, five hundred marriage licenses every year, box for each one, it adds up.
Legal's also had a lot.
Yeah.
Particularly with workers' comp issues.
No, it's not.
Yeah, if there's an employee that's still working with the city, it's, we have to hold on to those, I believe, seventeen years after the date of separation, so if there's somebody who's been here since nineteen eighty and they're still here, we've got, we may have records going back to, back to the...
We have tons of records, we have pretty structured, we have court records, we have all the...
There's a lot.
There are a ton of records, but we did check into the county to see if they could do it cheaper than we could.
Okay, that was my question. On page one ninety-eight, what type of hardware are we buying, similar across all those departments?
We upgrade servers every few years. One of the things we're looking to do next year is put a fire suppression system in our server room upstairs, if something happens.
Sounds like a good idea.
And constantly upgrade computers, we don't want to upgrade all the computers in one year, so we are cyclical, increase our licenses and upgrade our servers. We'll be the Windows ten by the end of January, machine will be done.
Congratulations, I hate Windows, but congratulations.
I'll make a motion to approve pages forty-two through forty-three, page thirty-two, and the section on one ninety-eight as well. So you men?
See, on the favor?
Aye.
And just thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, you've done a marvelous job in the last ten years, I think, when we started improving the, the system, or things were just so antiquated, and you really have done a great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is, is Charles Shager here?
Charles?
Charles.
Clarence, right? Where is he?
This is not Gilbert.
Not Gilbert.
We can do everything that's on this list, no, the only big department we got left after this is a fire, if you guys were to make some changes, we may have to reopen one of these lines for that.
Say that again?
The only big department after mine that you have left here is the fire department, who's coming tomorrow.
Correct.
If you guys were to make any major changes to that, we may have to reopen one of these to swap it.
All right, we're all right.
Okay.
Should we, what, what lines are open, I mean, we can just reopen them tomorrow?
I think we're all right.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have that.
I don't really see any issues in the fire department except for maybe one.
Okay.
Yeah, if that is.
Okay, so, let's open up. Read off all these, all these pages?
Seventeen, eighteen, twenty-two, forty-four, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-seven, one ninety-eight, one oh six to one oh eight, six, one oh nine, one eighty-six, one eighty-eight, one ten, ninety-seven through one oh five, two hundred to twelve, I don't have any changes.
This should be the last part. We're not done with these, so you can approve all the pages now, because you've seen all the big changes.
Okay, so, let's start out with page seventeen.
The, the assistant comptroller's position is currently vacant, doesn't say there, but it was vacated at the end of September. And the, that position hopefully will be filled by the end of October. Assistant purchasing agent, we're putting in two months, purchasing agent, as mentioned, that he is thinking about retiring, and when he decides to do that, I have money near to bring someone in for two months for training with him.
Yeah, but purchasing agent ready to retire?
Yes, he's, he's told me sometime between August and next January, so if he does, I want to bring someone in for two months for training specifically with him. No one else in the city going against his background.
Well, he's been here for what, forty years? I don't know.
He's been here a while.
I don't know. Thirty all night, Phil?
The finance clerk is vacant.
Ten to fifteen.
That's odd.
Gary, remember, Gary Bolger.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Gary.
So those are the only big changes in the personnel services. In the auditing services, although the account is going up roughly ninety thousand dollars, the big one is related to Gatsby recording, we have to increase that from like two thousand this year to sixty-two hundred, and some of the auditing expenses also went up.
We're, we're on track.
Yeah, exactly.
We're recording my calculations.
You should be counting my questions.
You guys on seventeen and eighteen?
Oh, yeah, I'm on, I'm on to one ninety-seven.
I'm on ninety-seven.
I do have a change on one oh six that we have to make.
What's the, the extra four hundred thousand for police and fire retirement on page ninety-eight?
The retirement numbers is what we get from the state, we get it basically August thirtieth, and those are what they project. The rate is going up for both police and fire, the fire's probably going up by next year, it's estimated it'll be thirty percent for any fire, fire that's under a tier six.
What's the change needed to make on one oh six, Chuck?
What's the change needed to make on one oh six? One oh six, the bond issue of two thousand and twelve, we refunded that, and the numbers are changing on it. The new numbers for the principal, where currently says five oh five, six one zero, is going to be three hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven oh four.
Which one is that, Chuck?
Top one.
The top one on page one oh six.
Five oh five, six one zero, okay.
Is going to be three ninety-nine, seven oh four. And the number in the interest end of it, where it says one seventy-five, two oh seven, is going to be two forty-five, oh eighty-four. There's a savings of thirty-six thousand, oh twenty-nine that needs to go to contingency.
How much is that?
Thirty-six thousand, zero twenty-nine.
An interest? Oh, no, total.
I think total.
Three six thousand, two, zero two nine.
I'm sorry, the bond issue of twenty-twelve interest is what?
The interest is going to be two forty-five, zero eighty-four.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend page one oh six, serial bonds principal from five oh five, six ten, bond issue of twenty-twelve to three ninety-nine, seven oh four, and serial bond interest, bond issue of twenty-twelve to two forty-five, eighty-four, making the total, bringing down the total of that page, thirty-six thousand dollars and twenty.
Thirty-six thousand, no, thirty-six.
Thirty-six thousand, twenty-nine, and trying to bring that savings to contingency.
Okay, Chuck, what happens with that thirty-six?
Just give it a second.
Second? On the favor?
Aye.
All right. What happens to that thirty-six thousand?
If something comes up that you need to use it for?
Okay, so it's...
We can't use it unless we come back here, or you guys...
Right, I mean, it's not, it doesn't go to, you know, it doesn't stay with the bonds?
No. Contingency could be used in anything in a general fund that you guys...
So including other, other monies that we've transferred to contingency, where something around, like, you know, we increased contingency spending like forty, forty-five thousand dollars, what, if, if that money didn't go to contingency and...
Went to reduced taxes.
Yeah, what, what would that look like? I mean, it would be pennies, dimes?
Well, I mean, I could give you that number tomorrow. We can keep some in contingency, we can maybe take some off for...
There's twenty-five that you had in contingency, there's twenty-five that you had in contingency, and now we're probably up to sixty-five.
Some of it out for contingency for something.
I think you started at thirty-five.
No, it was twenty-five, and then I brought it to thirty.
You brought it to thirty, so you took something out the other day, didn't you?
Then you took out like three thousand for the current assistant.
And we took out four hundred dollars for training for the...
I think we're probably around sixty.
I'll go through that and tell them what it is.
It would be interesting to know if we...
Like, percentage points, about three hundred thousand.
Trying to make a guess, where the city residents were getting a reduction of three point oh five, it might be three point two zero maybe, at the upper end of that.
That's better than three point four five.
Well, I'll give you the numbers, I'll give you the...
I would, I'd be interested in...
I'll do some variable surveys.
Okay, thank you. We could have had another five hundred in there.
Yeah. I couldn't go back and get it.
Do that tomorrow and call back, we'll call back. On page one oh seven, just so everyone understands, this comes from a schedule that when we go out and ban projects, fiscal advisors give us a minimum payment, this is more than their minimum payment. Every year we try to get as much debt off the books as possible, okay? And if we have items that are a seven-year bond item, we pay it off, we'll keep that ban open for five years, pay it off in five years, so it doesn't go long term.
Chuck, on page one oh eight, when it's zero out, like, are we starting to remove those lines?
Don't have to, kind of, this is the first... Technically, the city should not be doing leases, or it's a constitutional, that's one of the reasons why we've done leases since I've been here.
I just remember you saying this at some point, though, when, when, when it, you know, was zero for the past two years.
Then we can remove them, we will never remove them until they're all zero, but you can leave them if you want them.
Oh, okay.
And for things that may come back up, we can leave them. If we're never going to do this again, then come out.
All right, I will, whatever you recommend.
We'll just make a note that next year we'll do the budget removal.
Come back and check it out.
Yeah, you won't be bothered by it.
It's a...
We'll start the whole work for next year's budget about what needs to change, so that'll go forward.
Okay, great. One less page in the print.
Say two oh eight, there's that two oh eight, okay.
Are there any, do we need to change anything on page six to reflect the change that we just made, Chuck? Yeah, I would, I'd be interested in.
I'll do some variables and estimates.
Okay, thank you. We could have had another five hundred in there.
Yeah.
I can go back and get it. Do that tomorrow and call back.
Call it back.
On page one oh seven, this is what we want to change. This comes from a schedule that when we go out and ban for projects, fiscal advisors give us a minimum payment. This is more than the minimum payment. Every year we try to get as much debt off the books as possible, okay? And if we have items that are a seven-year bond item, we pay it off. We'll keep that ban open for five years and pay it off in five years. We don't let them go long term.
Chuck, on page one oh eight, when it's zero, I don't like that it's done yet to remove those lines.
Don't have to, Karen, this is the first one. We've got all that stuff, huh? We can get rid of it. Technically, the city should not be doing leases. Parts are constitutional, um, tax law. That's one of the reasons why we've done leases since I've been here.
I just remember you saying this at some point, though, when, when, when it, you know, was zero the past two years.
Then we can remove them. We will never remove them until they're all zero, but you can leave them if you want them.
Oh, okay.
For things that may come back up, we do leave them on. If we're never gonna do this again, then take them out.
Alright, I will, whatever you recommend.
We'll just make a note that next year when we do the budget removal, we will.
Come here, check it out.
Yeah, you won't be bothered by it.
Hey, some.
We're scheduled to hold over for next year's budget of all things to change, so that'll.
Okay, great. One less page in print.
Say two oh eight, there's that two oh eight, okay?
Are there any, do we need to change anything on page six to reflect the change that we just made, Chuck?
Yes, we're gonna have to change the top line here.
Which page did you say?
Page six.
Zero, zero.
Can I roll down that for a little?
Yep.
So that five oh five number we changed to three ninety-nine, seven oh four, the one seventy-five, two oh seven number we changed to two forty-five, zero eighty-four.
And then we'll, they can just pass it and we'll change all of them.
So the total's six forty-four, seven eighty-eight.
Alright, I will make a motion to amend page six, the bond issue of twenty-twelve line. Make principal three ninety-nine, seven oh four, interest two forty-five, eighty-four, and the total six forty-four, seven eighty-eight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The numbers?
The sale of equipment on page one eighty-seven, is this just stuff that we're retiring and selling on a secondary market or?
What page?
One eighty-seven?
Yes, these are what the different departments that have been here talked about, that if they sell it, whatever they get for it, go back and do the budget.
So what you see here is what you're seeing when we're doing the capital period, one ninety-seven, one ninety-eight, it's just restated here.
They don't sell anything, they don't get anything.
Sure.
We don't spend it till we get the cash.
That's a lot.
And then ninety-seven to one oh five in the account. Great, that much today, nothing matter. And are there any other city fees that we haven't talked about or? I think we've talked about all of them, right?
Yes.
I think that Lori said there aren't any that live.
Wait, do we need to make any additional motions then, or have we just amended?
Now you can just move off, move that whole set of pages.
What have you changed?
We moved everything that's highlighted and we added the one parking.
On page two oh eight, we changed the sewer rate back down to six sixty from six eighty-five.
And we added the parking ground fee.
The parking ground.
Alright. Okay.
That's here like the night, yeah, those changes.
Okay, you're my man.
Alright, I will make a motion to approve pages seventeen eighteen, twenty-two, forty-four, ninety, one ninety-seven, one ninety-eight, one oh six to one oh nine, six, one eighty-six, one eighty-eight, one ten, ninety-seven through one oh five, and two hundred through two oh eight.
I'll second that. As amended. As amended.
As amended. Although I don't think you actually need to say that.
You don't? Alright. All in favor?
Hi.
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 There's a couple other items here if you want to do them today. I'm gonna say, Chuck, I'm gonna say that they're on page seventy-four.
Are these finance items?
Well, one, someone's gonna have to open it up. These are not finance items, these are parks and recreation items. These were either key punchers by Lori and I or.
This was a, this was a mistake I made, I should have made the change.
Okay, basically, well, we, we went to civil service and we changed the assistant director of recreation to assistant director of parks and recreation.
Seventy-four.
Okay, so that's.
That's a title change? Under personnel services.
But I think that someone has to open the page or reopen it, to vote it for. Correct. And, right.
I think we all voted for it, so.
So we gotta reopen the page.
Alright, I'll make a motion to reopen page seventy-four.
Second.
And then you make the changes from assistant director of recreation to assistant director of parks and recreation.
Does that need an all in favor? Does that need four votes?
What, to reopen?
Does that?
I don't know.
I think.
My first time.
Yeah, because Canada always said in practice, if it just takes a first and a second, but four votes, and you actually change anything, you need four votes to reopen a page. Yeah. I, I believe that's what Ken said.
Okay, so that.
I'll make a motion to reopen page seventy-four.
Seconded it.
Second.
All in favor of reopening the page?
Aye.
So open.
I'll make a motion to change the personal services line on seventy-four, the assistant director of recreation to assistant director of parks and recreation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve page seventy-four as amended.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, I'm all in favor and then we'll vote, I think it was unanimous again. Okay, okay.
The other one, if you want to turn to page ninety-six before you vote, it's motion again is, Keith Carson's title says HUD manager slash grants administrator. It should say manager, comma, HUD administration and housing.
So it's, say it again?
It should say manager, comma, HUD administration and housing.
So manager, so you, yeah, you gotta reverse the word, manager first and comma HUD.
Administration and housing.
Make a motion to open page ninety-six, reopen ninety-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're open and we need to change.
I make a motion to change the personal services line on page ninety-six from HUD manager slash grants administrator to manager, comma, HUD administrator, HUD administration and housing.
Second. Is that correct wording?
That's I have.
Yeah, two seconds, Chuck.
That's it for.
Yeah, you're, comma, HUD admin housing, yes.
There's another one I gotta get.
It's gonna be.
Same page or no?
No, 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 I can't do it tonight, I gotta talk.
Oh, okay, alright. I'll take a vote on ninety-six to change. Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's amended, as amended. Is that it?
That is it.
We should turn it to.
Second.
Page amended, that's right.
Yep.
Oh, no, we did not.
The type, well, you moved to approve the type change.
That's correct. I, I, motion to approve page ninety-six, as amended, and I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Good catch.
Yep, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor of that, we are adjourned.